...under God, indivisible, and representative of justice.
Thank you.
Especially today.
Linda, we do a roll call.
Yes. Ron Ritchie?
Here.
Jason Warshine?
Here.
Sam Morocco?
Here.
Bill Scarborough? David Lohmeyer, absent. Belinda Billings here. Joe Suter?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. A review of the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda to add a G three to the tree ordinance, G three under regular business.
Support if you need it.
Yeah, do. All favor to approve the amended agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda. There is nobody in the audience, so I don't think I need to do my speech about how this is...
There's one person online.
Not...
It's JJ.
Jim Johnson.
Oh, there's two people online.
Any... There's nobody in the audience. Anybody online have any comments they'd like to make? No comments? Okay, I will close the public comment sections for item not on the agenda. We have no public hearing, so we'll move right into item G. PC File 2025-009 Trinity Health, a second wall sign. Petitioner is Johnson Sign Company. They are requesting approval of a second wall sign on the former right aid to be occupied by Trinity Health. Megan, kind of thing you'd like to... It looks like a pretty cut and dry deal?
It is a pretty cut and dry deal. So, the applicant's proposing to reuse the space in the existing commercial center as a primary urgent care. That use can be approved administratively by staff. What's before you today is they're asking for an additional wall sign, a wall sign which requires approval by the planning commission. They're allowed one by right. They can have up to three. They're asking for two. When this previously was a...
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy, thank you. There were three signs on it, mostly to help with the drive-through. The drive-through structure is still there, but the signs have been removed. What they're proposing is a single sign on the east corner of the main entrance, so that's visible from Main Street. And a single sign in the peak of the building facade that's facing Dixie Highway. And then when you add the area of these two up, it is just at its maximum of a hundred square feet. So, it meets the ordinance. It had been approved previously for the wall sign, but it requires your approval as proposed for two signs, yes. It was approved for three previously.
Jason, I mean, Joe?
Yes. I mean, I have no problem with two signs. Actually, there were three there before when it was a pharmacy. So, there's two wall signs. The only thing that it didn't get mentioned yet was the ground sign, where they wanted to put something on top of the sign, the urgent care. Or is that coming up yet?
I verified that with Brian. I asked him about the ground signs, and he said that additional ground sign that they were proposing met the height and met the area requirements for ground signs. It was... It's an addition on top of it, but he said the height was the additional height. It was still under the maximum. And the additional area was still under the maximum for a ground sign. So, that's purely an administrative function.
What gives them that distinction as being administrative versus what comes back here?
So, for any signs, if they're just replacing the copy, and it's still within the maximum area and the maximum height, then it's administrative by the...
Within the ordinance?
Within the ordinance, yes.
Even if they're exceeding what was there?
Even if they were exceeding what was there previously.
Okay.
The problem is, there's no dimensions on this print, so we don't know if it's a limit or not.
Six feet's the maximum height, and this doesn't tell us that it's at six feet. The pediments typically on top, the balls. Sorry, I just jumped in there.
You're fine.
When we typically approve ground signs at six feet, and I can tell by looking at the sign, it's probably pretty damn close to six feet. Tell by how many copies are on it. A lot of times, we don't count the pediment on top or the ball as an architectural feature, but even this is higher than that on the sign. This, what do you call that flag or whatever the banner, you know, that they got on there, so...
I recognize that. I asked the question to Brian. He said it met the criteria and it was an administrative approval. If you wanted verification of that, you could approve it conditional upon the ground sign meeting all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
And...
I would definitely want to do that.
Include that as a condition?
Yeah, well, we just had a conversation about complete packets and stuff. It would've taken nothing to put the height, you know, to make sure the compliance was there by a measurement, you know? And if you've been around the township lately, these signs are getting taller and taller than six feet. Now, whether they're being administered or monitored, but I can tell you driving down the road, they're getting taller and taller.
He did dimension the urgent care portion. They wanted the flag they want to put on top, and it says it's eleven inches tall, so... So, I mean, that's almost another foot to the sign. And to me, the sign's probably already at six foot.
Mr. ...
So, I'm not saying that it can't be done, but I'm saying that I'm questioning whether or not I would like verification that it meets the ordinance before it becomes an administrative thing, that we make sure that it fits.
Are you willing to do that as a condition of approval, or do you want it before we approve?
I would be... I'd like to do it as a condition of the approval of that sign. I don't think it should hold up the manufacturing or the production of the building signs. That's a different thing. And I know you're not... It's kind of weird because we're not being asked permission for this sign, but yet we all... I think there's a consensus that we question whether or not it meets the six foot.
Yeah.
I have another heartache. To me, this is helping the plaza owner, you know, increase his capabilities for the plaza. And I guess I'm still upset with this plaza owner that they denied cross-access parking to the Chris Belli's building. And now they're here wanting additional favor from us to increase the sign amount, so...
All the more reason why we should make sure it meets our ordinance.
Right. That's what I'm saying. I don't want to give him special favor over and above what he's entitled to if, you know... And part of the reason they denied it was the pharmacy that was there sold items that the people in the Chris Belli's building sell. So, they objected. I guess that company at the time had veto power over that.
Yeah.
If they're no longer there, then why can't we get approval to do that if we want to do that in the future?
Right. Well, and I don't want to beat up on the Trinity Health guy who's here because he's not part of that, but...
I said the wall signs. I think we're okay with the wall signs, but I just... To me, this should, if, I guess, to me, I guess it might have to infringe on him if we can't prove...
Right. It's got to be in compliance.
Right.
Just...
I think there's some extenuating circumstances why it needs to be in compliance, not just, you know, check off something on newspapers.
Is a gentleman online to represent the applicant?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, my name is Jim Johnson with Johnson Sign Company, representing Trinity Health.
Okay.
I have a question for Jim.
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Hey, Jim, a quick question. Are you... You're aware of the hundred-foot maximum and Trinity is? So, that if they were to decide that three signs would be better, they're burning it up on the two?
Yeah, we looked at doing three signs and splitting up a hundred square feet between three of them. And we found that the best use for it would be to go with two fifty-square-foot signs at the locations we showed. So, we did explore it, but they're fully aware that they're allowed a hundred square feet, and two would be the ask of what would best use or what would fit their needs the best on this.
Okay, just wanted to make sure they were clear so it didn't, you know, catch them later or something.
Do... I have another question. Do we... Joe, are you still on that topic?
Yes.
Okay, go. You go first.
Okay. The... I don't know who could answer this question. I certainly was wrong on this. But the Trinity Health sign on this picture here, they say is two point six feet, two and a half feet or so. But then, which is fine, I'm not arguing about that, but if you look at that sign in relation to the larger sign that it's a part of, the blessing in paparolas, pizza, and the dance expression is a lot taller than the two point six. It may be three point six. I guess I'm getting at that may be more than six feet, the whole sign, not including urgent care, just from the dimensions that are on here.
Yeah, I think that's our concern.
Okay, well, you know, I'm definitely not in favor of adding the urgent care time on top of it if it was six feet tall. I'm thinking the whole sign is above six feet tall right now. Forget the urgent care parts.
Jim, do you know the height of the monument sign?
I do not off the top of my head. We surveyed the cut size for those top panels, which were the Trinity's going in. But based on scaling it, I don't know for sure what it would be yet. But, yeah, I could try to find that out though by scaling it up and seeing if I could get a scale on what the overall height would be at that point.
Do we know if the new occupants are going to use the drive-through?
Not from my knowledge.
Shouldn't we require those drive-through signs to be taken down then?
You could require those drive-through signs to be taken down.
I went through there today, and there's some of them, at least some. I don't know what was all up there, but some are still there.
That could be a condition of approval.
Okay. Anybody else?
Non-applicable signs removed.
When do we make it a condition of approval? What happens if the condition is not met?
My understanding is then he doesn't have approval.
That's correct.
Okay, so nothing would be built, changed, modified until approval is granted?
On the signs. And let's say they got to a point where they wanted to occupy and put up signs, you could hold a certificate of occupancy as well.
Okay, but there is some...
Yes, there's some recourse.
Yeah.
Oh, and if you wanted, you could add the requirement that we get an updated drawing next month to verify the size of the monument sign. Sam?
I think that I would say that the marquee sign that he's in question that matches the height of the rest of the signs on the sign are not... is not the issue. It's the urgent... It's can the urgent care sign be added to the...
It's the expansion of the...
To the sign itself. So, in my opinion, if that sign is six foot, six inches tall because the grade's a little lower or something, and it's been like that, and all the marquees are in place, I don't have an issue with them replacing the Trinity marquee. I'm strictly talking about the marquee that's being added to the height, added elevation to the sign itself only, the word's urgent care. And if that turns out to go over the top, I would suggest either they seek some sort of special approval for that or they move the urgent care wording into their own box of their own marquee so that it stays at the current height. Does that make, if you just picture that going into the Trinity sign itself, the red stripe that says urgent care on it? If it's...
If they want more.
If they want to just be able to move forward if we find that putting on the extra eleven inches is a problem.
Couldn't you just accomplish that same thing by making sure that the entire monument sign, including the urgent care piece on top, meets the size restrictions of our ordinance?
Well, yeah, I'm saying that if without the urgent care wording, if we're at six feet or close to it, and that's going to clearly blow past our height restriction, that they, you know, that they're going to have to seek approval to get that additional eleven inches of height at it, or they're going to have to incorporate it into the actual Trinity sign marquee that meet, you know, the white sign that meets the monument. Does that...
But they also have this on I H Medical. This is all there, so...
What's theirs?
The tattooed.
Well, okay, so however they work it inside the confines, that's all, you know, so if they decide we don't want to go through trying to seek approval to put it on top, they have the right to put, you know, change the marquee and put it in the normal sign itself.
In all reality, I frankly don't know what was there before this. And I'm not convinced that the, as you call it, marquees are within the right height.
I'm assuming, and Jim, can you confirm that you're not changing the structure at all with the marquee? You're just replacing panels that were existing at the size that they were when you got on job, other than the urgent care marquee?
Yeah, you're correct. That's correct.
Okay.
So, I'm not trying to have them rebuild the whole sign.
Well, that's my thing too. I just don't want to grant them height variance is really what you're doing.
Okay.
Without, you know, without, I guess to me, that's not administrative. That's something he needs to go through. And to me, there's going to be some trading action at the time because I still think we should have approval for the cross-access in the future if needed.
Well, that's a different...
I think we need to know what we need to do on those two issues.
Megan, are you...
Any other issues?
Still with that?
Yes, I think you just need to have it clearly articulated as a condition of approval.
I'm going to try to do that.
Okay, cool. Great. Thank you.
Go for it.
Are we... Everybody good?
Yep.
Do my best. I'm going to move on File PC 2025-009 Trinity Health. Second wall sign request be granted for the proposed two wall signs as presented. And that the marquee sign be verified that it meets the ordinance in height of the current framing and size and configuration that's in place now, and that they, if anything that goes above that, would require them to come back and get approval for that.
There's two of those signs too.
To add the marquee on all of the ground signs on the property that are affected. So, if they...
Drive-throughs, don't forget that.
Oh, and that any additional signs on the building that are not applicable be removed.
Support.
Okay. Everybody okay?
Yep, I just want a quick question. If somehow we find out that, forget the urgent care red sign, that the sign is right now six and a half feet, we don't care. Is that what we're saying?
Not that we don't care. I'm not putting it in my motion that that affect what they're doing.
If it's already non-conforming, I just don't want to increase the...
We're not going more non-conforming, that's all. We're not going to make them bring it.
Okay.
That's not part of my motion, just what we specified. Jim, are you clear on what I said?
Yeah. Yeah, clear on it.
Okay. I think we can do a roll call, or, you know, just a yea or nay. So, all favor, yea?
Yea.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night.
Next is PC File 2025-008 Dixie Highway Township Initiated Rezoning Reports.
So, in your packet were reports on the three parcels that we were, that you wanted to look at in terms of evaluating their zoning. I want... I'm not sure if I... I don't think I can share my screen.
Okay.
I can do it.
I don't know how.
I don't know if I'm powered to. So, I'm asking the host if I can.
For her to share her screen up there. Do you know how to do that?
Yeah.
Jason to the rest.
Hit the share button.
No, I know how to do. I know how to do it. I just don't know if I am...
Hit the share button. You already got the screen up. Click on that screen there. And hit the share button, and then it turns in red. Now she got there.
All right. Here.
There it is.
Yay!
There's something, yes.
Okay.
Knew it.
Could you write that down?
Yeah.
That's my secret.
Okay, so this parcel that is up right now is the Dixie Highway. I'm just going to call it zero zero five. So, it's the largest parcel. It's up to the north. It is eight point three five nine acres, and it's five hundred and seventy feet wide. So, the zoning districts we were looking at that match the future land use, which is Dixie Highway target area, and in this particular area in the text, it talks about office and senior housing. We had R three and R four, which are the... R three's the senior housing. R four is the attached single family. And what we did is looked at those, and for this particular parcel, if you just look at setbacks, minimum lot size and minimum lot width, it's feasible. But when you start to look at the natural features on this site, there's a couple of things that I want to point out to you. Number one is, I don't think my mouse moved. I'm going to be... Hopefully, everybody, there's nobody online, but... So, you can see there's a depression here that goes down twenty feet.
Oh, wow.
So, that is a constraint on that property. So, most likely, if somebody was going to develop it, that's where they would look to put stormwater and some other things. Also, when you look on aerials, when it's during the fall or the winter, you'll see that that's the spot where there's not a lot of trees. So, those are some natural features that you should just keep in mind as you're looking at what zoning districts would be appropriate. And right now, this is Zone C four, which is not in keeping with that future land use category. So, the questions we had for each, for all of you on each of these ones is, is the current zoning appropriate? And then, if not, what zoning district do you think should be pursued? And the next step would be for us to do a rezoning report on a particular zoning district and come back to you, almost like a petitioner's petitioning for that parcel to be rezoned.
Question? Do you... Can you estimate how far back that depression is from our setback lines? And I'm thinking it seems like in both residential and office two that that might be a nice natural feature to center a buffer zone around.
It's pretty far back. So, if you look at these, and I think these are mostly at the same scale, you'll see that there's that fifty-foot buffer on O S two, and that would come back about to the edge where that depression happens because that depression is pretty much in the middle.
So, is this a county property?
This is a county-owned property, yeah.
So, nobody could put...
This one and the one on the corner.
Yeah.
Nobody could put anything in front of it? They'd be in the setback.
They would be in the setback. So, probably what would happen is if something was developed, the buildings probably would be over on this side or come back. And then, this is probably where the stormwater would be. And then, I know that you guys had talked about this being the ability to have a natural buffer there. There's a good set of trees there, but they're mostly deciduous. So, during the winter, it's not as much storm.
Are there any wetlands there?
There's a little wetland. This is that, you'll see on your report, there's a blue.
Oh, okay.
To that back, that's Springfield Township, and if you look on a bigger aerial, you'll see that seems to be some sort of wetland or stormwater area. It's got what looks like a man-made stream or loop. So, I don't think that would necessarily... But that's not, that's not, that wetland's not further than what the setback is for the real property line.
The people that were here for Pamplona talked about a lake, little lake or pond back there.
Yeah, that would...
In your... So, have you... How'd you turn on the screen? Have you done... So, this was proposed to be the new courthouse on this property, assuming that the stormwater was going to go into the depression or whatever if we built a courthouse there, you know? Any idea of how... So, at this point in this process with you, do we say like, let's say we wanted to do a multi-use development, you know, just for instance, let's say we wanted to do a retail down below with lofts above. Let's say we wanted to do multi-family in there. Like, when do we get to the point where in those scenarios, you would say, well, you could, you know, thirty-two units would fit, or three buildings could be built around that pond, you know, with this kind, you know, with this kind of footprint, you know, that would protect the, you know, what... Because it has to be... footprint, you know, that would protect the, you know, what, what, 'cause we, it has to be uh, a viable property that the person could, you know, that the county, if they sell it, it can, they can profit from it and someone can use it. So we got, you know, we have to find, uh, a viable use for it, so, but I'm just not, you know, like when you say, well, what zoning do you want? Well, it's a lot different between it'll fit a dentist's office, or it'll fit three, you know, eight unit townhomes, you know, uh, and, you know, altogether. So it's, you know, a little bit harder to, to, it sounds like from the size of it and from what the county was planning on doing it, that it has enough room to be office buildings, it has enough room to be, uh, you know, multi-fan, it has enough room to do, this is the parcel that has enough room to probably be more versatile.
Yes.
You know?
Mm-hmm. So.
But we don't have the option, we don't have a choice to, to classify it as a multi-use zoning, do we? We don't have it, other than PUDs, we don't have any way of doing it.
Uh, yeah, 'cause you don't have a multi-use district.
Yeah.
So, um, what would be appropriate is to pick the zoning district closest to what you want. Um, and then, um, you could also, um, you could also update the master plan for these areas to say this is the vision for it. So. So to answer your question, trustee Morocco, the more appro- the appropriate time would, to do a schematic of what could fit, um, would be once you've chosen a zoning district. And that could be part of the rezoning report coming forward, but also when you're looking at a rezoning, you're looking at all the uses that are allowed in that zoning district.
Right. You know, I'm kinda torn, 'cause I don't wanna give up commercial, the commercial, you know, revenue and commercial. We only have so much left in the township, and that's really who pays the, the bulk. But we certainly don't want it to be C four, which can be very invasive, so, uh, it's office service is what we have it, uh, master planned as, or?
In the master plan, what it says is this area should be primarily office and allow for senior housing in some instances.
Okay, so how do you, those are two different categories, so how do you pick a zoning ordinance that's similar to that? You know, 'cause senior housing.
You have a district.
Don't they pay also, like, it's a commercial building and taxes, they're not homesteaded, like a house? Right, you know what I mean? So, uh, I like to be, I wanna be conscious of what we have that isn't able to be homesteaded, that we, you know, we get a full tax return, you know, re, re, of, you know, rate on. So, uh, that would be one of them too, right?
Yeah.
If you talk to everybody though, the, uh, senior housing, whatever, is, it's a lot more burden on your, uh.
Utility services.
Services, yeah, your, especially your first responder services.
And I mean, what we're really looking for in the township is affordable housing, which is unobtainable, I believe, at the, at the way things are currently.
To me, though, the, uh, the lofts above there could be, you know, I guess to me, those most likely would be rentals because they're part of the commercial building, but to me, that might be a lower rental than, you know, say like the Deer Hill, uh, ones that.
Right.
Three grand or more, whatever.
'Cause there's a lot of people who, you got two, two things I see in the township since I've been here, is that you've got, that all the people who, like, I built homes for back in the nineties, whose kids are gone and they're, and they'd like to find something smaller if they're gonna stay here, or a second home, a footprint here, and maybe one somewhere else, you know, in the wintertime. And then the other complaint is that, um, you know, our youth can't live here. Like, I have a daughter that can't afford to live in Clarkston, so she drives to Davison, so. To Ron's point, you know, could there be a way of, uh, of more affordable, uh, affordable, sm- you know, smaller units, but in geographically close to us, you know, mixed with commercial? But we don't, we don't have a zoning for that.
You don't have a mixed-use zoning district, so in terms of a straight rezoning, um, that's not an option. If that really is where you wanna go, I would say that we work on some sort of small area plan that then becomes an amendment to the master plan.
Okay, and in the interim, what would you recommend if we wanted to keep those, all the, you know, few things we've mentioned?
Right. Um, I, I would say it's either OS two, R three, R four, or OS one. OS one is your least intense. OS two allows some more retail uses. Um, and then, um, R three, um, is your senior housing, and R four is your single-family attached housing.
Which of the OS do you think is more conducive to a mixed use? Is that a hard question?
Probably two, would you think?
Probably two, because that has some more retail uses in it.
That's what I was leaning towards.
That's what we were saying all along.
Right, getting to that, you know?
Couldn't we accomplish a mixed-use thing? You know, one of the things on our list of things to do is to rewrite the Dixie Highway plan. And couldn't we, uh?
For an overlay, or what?
Well, I, let's not, it, let's not get into specifics on how.
Okay.
Or, uh, uh, but, yeah, all options.
Yeah, yes, you could, but that's gonna take you a while. So if you, if you're, I, I would say that would be, you know, this, doing some sort of rezoning out of C four is gonna, for this parcel in particular, um, if you're anxious that that might become a retail entity under C four that you don't want, I would say to look to get that rezoned as soon as possible to something that matches the master plan. Um, and that would be, could be OS one or OS two. Then start working on, uh, Dixie Highway.
Target plan or something?
Well, it could be an overlay district, um, that has different setbacks, and then maybe allow some mixed use.
I think that OS two's gonna be the most defendable for us to achieve our goal. It's gonna give the owners of the properties more options, so they're not gonna feel like we're hindering them from, from developing it, and that, um,
Yeah.
And it gets us closer to the alignment, you know, and it puts us kind of in the middle of a, in the middle, you know, of what could happen. We're, right now, we're at the far extreme of where we don't wanna go.
Yeah, like say to me, if somebody's gonna develop it, they're gonna also like, have a couple of those other one or two units to, to give them some more wood fromage.
So, but right now, let's, right now, let's just say for zero zero five, we've arrived at, at OS two, and we'll revisit this after we go through the other two parcels.
Sounds good.
One other question, on the R four, single-family attached, those would be homesteaded, correct?
Those could be homesteaded, yeah, depending on how that they were, how, they could be rentals, and then that would be a different assessing classification.
Okay, and we got the next parcel.
So the next parcel is, um, it's two point eight nine acres and it's four hundred and nineteen feet wide. So any of the zoning districts, the OS two, the R three, and the R four are all options. What makes this parcel odd right now is that it's split-zoned. So it has some that's C one, um, and some that's R two. Um, and the parcel to the south that we'll talk about later, the, the parcel that's in the corner, that is R two, and I think probably the idea was for those two to be together to be.
The detention pond?
Well, there's dependi- there's stormwater throughout. Brian shared with me before the meeting that there had been some stormwater agreements amongst all, all of these properties. Um, and so that probably is gonna be a challenge to look at. So you may wanna also look at, consider having all three of them have the same zoning.
Was it a written agreement?
'Cause isn't the corner parcel gonna end up being the retain- could be the retention pond for all of them? 'Cause isn't that a huge basin right there? That cor- I thought that corner piece was a big depression.
No.
The little one on the corner, no, that's flat?
No, that's, that's flat, that's around one twenty, but everything runs, that's the lowest point of, of these three. Yeah, everything runs down to there.
Yeah, that's lower, right.
You said there was a stormwater agreement, was that a written agreement?
It looks like it's all the same.
I'm not aware.
It's all flat.
So.
I think it's ten, twenty, ten thirty, ten forty.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it goes up twenty foot from one end to the other.
So, yeah, that was on the other parcel. The other thing about this is that single families bunks up to the back of this. So, single, you got, single family here.
Yeah, right here.
Then you've got office across the street, and then you've got the other vacant parcel that we're gonna talk about.
Yeah.
Um, and then.
That's just individual homes coming off the road on a driveway, right?
Yes.
Behind it, so there's one parcel that consume, that's adjacent to the back of that whole piece, is one person's lot?
Their side lot line is adjacent to the rear lot line. Um, but when you, when I looked at that in, on aerials today, the back of that is not as heavily wooded as some other places on that parcel. So even though you might preserve some trees in there, you probably might, might wanna augment that if it's buying up to residential for a buffer.
Does, um, doing OS two on, uh, uh, the one parcel and then leaving the other two of R two lend itself to a higher likely out of mixed use?
Um, I would say this is the parcel to have something be residential in nature. Um, and then the parcel, the next parcel, the parcel on the corner, that is only one point one seven five acres. So it really, it's a non-conform parcel for R two. The minimum for R two, R two, the multi-family is ten acres, so you've got a one-acre piece that's zoned.
It has a ten-acre piece.
For something that has a minimum, and so the lot size, the minimum lot size and minimum lot width that that corner parcel matches is OS one and OS two. Those would be the most appropriate there, just to, for conformity's sake.
And that's what, one point what?
One point one seven five.
Oh, bummer for them.
And it's a corner lot, so our mistake, if you caught it, on the diagram, was that we, on the Pinewood Road, we didn't show that as a front yard setback. That should be a forty-foot's front yard setback, so that's gonna
Shrink it.
constrain that building to envelope even more.
Why is that same owner in both those parcels?
It's not the same owner in those, those parcels.
Do we know if they have, if there's a way of them to tie into the storm system on that property?
Um, no, but that could be a question that we could explore, and then.
So the rea- I, I've been diving into this because of another parcel. So the county standards of stormwater management underground is one acre and above. And it's a huge, it's like a crazy amount of pipe, like five hundred feet of underground corrugated storage for anything above an acre. When you get below an acre, it becomes hard to do that.
Yeah.
And, um, we're actually talking about some ordinance that's pertaining to that, 'cause now you've got so much underground storage, there's the building footprint. You know, there's just only so much room, and they're one point one, so they're gonna have a lot of, if they can't tie into the storms or, uh, meeting the county standard on stormwater management is gonna, is gonna hinder the whether or not they're gonna, you know, that gets developed because of the cost.
It could be under the park lines, it can't be under the buildings.
Well, that's what, but what, what's, but, you know, but when they make it, that's why it's over an acre is regulated and under is not. But I'm just saying, they're right at that cusp where it's gonna, that could be a big issue for who develops that. So an assemblage might make sense, so they have the other property to meet that, you know, there's gonna be, you know, so there's, I think that we should, uh, be conscious of the neighbors and the, and the, uh, the zoning being, uh, com- you know, as compatible, you know, maybe OS one, or like she said, uh, uh, but I think that because of some of those restraints in the size of that lot, that those two lots, do you see a problem, Megan, with those two being similar to each other in zoning and more residential friendly and compatible in the lower intense zonings?
No, I, I, I don't, I, I don't see a problem with all of them being OS one or OS two. Um, I think that would help them. The other thing I'm gonna point out on here is there's a, a big pine tree right here in the corner. But when looking at Google Street these days, it looked like it's actually a sign is like tucked in underneath that tree. So what that made me wonder is whether there are any easements there that are from the subdivision that goes down, um, Pinewood Drive, that they might, that, that back corner piece might have some constraints on it that we don't know about.
That pushes it even, makes it smaller.
Makes it even smaller. Um, so I think it would be to the advantage. There's a couple, two ways you could attack this. Is that whatever is next door to that corner piece, they're zoned the same, so that they have the possibility of being, uh, a facilitated development, and taking some of this pressure off the smaller piece to tie in the larger infrastructure. Or if you kinda wanted to force the mixed-use issue, you might do office service at the, on the eight point three nine acre, the large quiet cars. R three or R four for these, that's middle piece that's split-zoned now. And then do OS one or OS two for the one on the corner, where you're kind of, what you're kind of saying is, like, jump them all together, then you have all the things to have the underlying uses for something that's mixed use.
'Cause it would be compatible then with the neighbor, if you go this way, and it'd be back and forth.
And what makes me a little nervous about the OS one or OS two in the corner is that that's right next to a single-family residential drive.
Right.
And likely they will have to get access, they, they're, if, if the.
That's what I was gonna say, by access off Pinewood to, uh, 'cause they, they might not get a curb cut, they're close to the turn-in right there.
Yeah, yeah. So I think you have two choices, I think, do them all the same, or kind of split them up where you're kind of forcing the issue to, you're kind of nudging somebody into a P U D. To try and get off or.
Both of those you feel confident are, um, gonna have a posi- you know, to be defendable when we have the attorneys look at them and have developable opportunities so that the resident, the owners of the properties don't feel like they're being hamstrung or, or anything.
If you, whatever direction you give us, we'll do a few tests on there to make sure that each individual parcel is developable as it's proposed to be zoned. And then, um, that would be part of the zoning report that we'll come back to.
Okay.
Linda, we make sure that Joe, Dave arrived at six forty-three?
Say what?
Or, let the record show Dave arrived at six forty-three.
I was late.
Okay, Joe, you were.
I just, a question for Megan, I guess. I, I know there's a simple explanation, and I know I should know it, but I don't.
It's setbacks in their different zones.
Okay. Well, the zones cause a different setback.
The zoning causes a different setback, yes, that's a better way to express it. Yes.
Megan, um, as far as single-family attached, would that be compatible with fronting on Dixie?
Yeah, I mean.
Are there other single, well, I mean, I know there's those apartments that are, they're ranch-style that are right there close to Deer Lake, but, I mean, are there other single-family fronting on Dixie?
Not that I'm aware of, but I've seen other single-family in other communities on roads as large and as busy as Dixie.
There's that elderly home, right, used to be a furniture store.
Yeah, Thomasville.
Yeah.
Old Thomasville.
I could see elderly, because, uh, I just, I don't know, I just don't think single-family attached would be as desirable if they're fronting on Dixie. Maybe if you had a really big setback, yeah.
Would a pure multifamily be?
None of these, none of them are.
But mixed use, you know, with living and office space?
Yeah, again, you, you, yes, mixed use would be appropriate. Um, if you, I, I have seen where, like, it, so that single-family attached, like, in Milford. If you're in Milford Township and you're going right into Milford from, you're going south, there's some townhomes that are right there, that are right on that busy road, and there, there's one driveway that goes in, the parking pool's in the back, that they front.
I get that, but they're more of a walkable downtown area.
Right.
Dixie doesn't appear that to me.
Right, so this would be more, there, I've also seen it where they look like cottages.
Mm-huh.
Um, or something along the lines of, um, I don't know if you've seen the cohousing, where the, it's, they're attached buildings, um, and they're usually in a U or a Mew or something like that, where they have a shared courtyard. they're attached buildings, um, and they're usually in a U or a Mew or something like that where they have a shared courtyard. Um, so.
But if, if one of the reasons we're doing this is to kinda steer somebody towards a PUD, the single, the, the R two portion or R four portion could be any, if they were creative enough, could be moved around within all three parcels and everywhere, right?
Correct. And if you really wanted to, again, I think the best vehicle for having these to be a PUD or is to put something in the master plan that says something about the specific area and what you want it to look like. And you could have two scenarios, one if the courthouse came, one if it didn't. Um, and then, but in the meanwhile, you need to probably find some sort of zoning at least for the C four spot that can be a placeholder.
Jen.
Linda, are you done?
No. And I'm just thinking, um, the R three elderly housing residential, seems like they could use the whole, all, all of those tracks if you, if you zoned it for that.
Yep.
Because if you chop it up, sometimes it's not enough space. I mean, I mean, if you really wanted an attractive development on Dixie Highway for elderly, I would think you'd want the whole thing.
And if you wanted it screened as well, um, yes, you raise, you raise an excellent point.
Sam?
Sorry, I'm done.
Are you done? I would, all good information. This is, you know, I, I did do one of these township initiated rezonings, but it was a long, long time ago. So uh, the process, I, in my opinion, from what I've heard from you and what we talked about, I can, being conscious of defending it, being conscious of the landowner's rights. I think that, in my opinion, that, that we should rezone the three parcels, you know, consistently to like an OS two. And then with the caveat that we want to um, embellish the master plan to be more specific about the desire, you know, the, what we would be receptive to as desirable multi-use properties in the future like you suggested. I'm just concerned that if we get any pushback from the attorneys or anybody, you know, thinking that we're, we're making the property less valuable, we're not giving them the options. And we do need to get rid of C four, that's our priority to get this thing more in line. Um, I think that's our most defendable, best path to accomplish this. And not go through this exercise and then have it blow up in our face and then not, you know, and not, and get a pushback. So
We.
Um, what do you think?
Um, then I think at this point it would be good for you to direct us to ask the township if we can talk to this township attorneys about zoning all three parcels OS two and if there was any pushback or hesitation on that.
So I have talked to other uh, people in the township and what, what the consent, the consensus I got was is that there is uh, there's a, they're receptive and, and to aligning these properties to the master plan zoning as long as um, we're not starting a, we're not going against our attorney's recommendations from day one, that's gonna be a problem. So that's why I'm trying to
Gotcha.
Be as conscious of that as possible.
Jason?
Um, so uh, I, I, I agree with the approach. Um, I just wanted to bring out the master plan. Took me, took me about five minutes to download it on the internet connection here, but I have.
Yeah.
The design objectives here for um, Northwest Dixie Highway, uh, page fifty seven says expand non-retail uses such as memory care, medical use, alternative housing choices for aging population. There's four points. That was the first. The second one incorporate uses that will transition between the commercial corridor to single family residential. The third point encourage complimentary housing options that may be associated with medical and senior care. Point five, preserve and incorporate natural features of the site while still maximizing investment opportunities. And finally, increase pedestrian and vehicular connectivity. So I think where we're headed do, does kinda do that. We may need to tweak it slightly, uh, cause it says expand non-retail use and I think OS two would include some retail, light retail, is that right?
Yeah.
Uh, if, if, if if there's a potential for pushback, it could be that it's listed here a little bit differently. So
Right.
We, we may need to tweak this. But I fully agree personally that we should zone them the same way. Cause I think it would give a developer a real chance of using a larger piece to do something to make money.
Anybody else?
Can we like to ask a question?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I looked over the back. I apologize for being late. I did let Atman know. He said, I think we got a majority. So I had a, delayed from work. But I just had a question on these. I looked over the back and I'm in alignment. I, I agree with what I've, I've heard and talked about so far. And I think the other parcels kind of this, a similar story. I just wondered if we had anything to your knowledge that has come in in the past, maybe we don't research, that would you, you just tell me. I, I could stop there cause I can see the expression on your face. That where I'm going is, uh, that would be align itself with the commercial, uh, current zoning. That has tried to come in on these parcels.
Not that I'm aware of, but I don't have the history that Mr. Atman or Mr. Carl I would.
So that might be a good thing for us, when we talk to the attorneys, it's kinda dig into.
Mr. Ritchie, actually. You would, you've served on this board.
Well, like I say, it's been designated for the courthouse for so long, I don't think anybody's really tried to.
I was just curious, in the last, you know, say fifteen, twenty years that we've seen a plan come forward that was actually fitting the commercial that's right now.
The large, the, the large plot on the upper part, upper left there, Dave?
Yeah.
Is the, the old courthouse property, so.
So I've been on, I've been on the commission on and off since oh three. So the stories I've heard are, there's only two stories I've ever heard. The, well, three. The courthouse was the intent. At some point in my life on this planning commission, someone came to us with a proposal of a PUD with retail below and apartments above. It was a conceptual plan that didn't go anywhere, but it, I remember seeing it and us talking about it. Okay, that's why that, that has, was bounced around before you got here, that we had talked about that kinda mixed use. That was something that had been in the history of the township. And then the last piece was the Red Barn, you know,
Right.
problem that was, uh, which is not allowed in any of the districts currently, but, but what was interest in the parcel. Like, can you think of any other?
I'd say the Red Barn was farther to the west or north, whatever you call it. So.
Yeah, it doesn't change.
What I think we're gonna do tonight, you know.
I, I know there's been talk about mixed use before, but since we don't have any designation, it always seems like it was dead on arrival.
Joe, Megan, can you outline the pro- the next steps?
So the next steps would be, um, one is for us to check with the township to make sure that we can
Pursue.
Have a conversation with the township attorney that this is fine, but your intent is to, you would like to explore zoning all three parcels OS two. Um, and in the report that would come back to you on that, what you would like to see is some layouts, conceptual layouts as well to see how each parcel, each of the three could be feasibly developed um, for those uses that are allowed in that district.
And the purpose of that is so that we can demonstrate that it is a feasible zoning and it can be developed.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah.
Profitable venture for someone.
I, I don't think we're gonna do a pro forma for you, but we can do, uh, in our scope, of course, there's some schematics.
Do you need a mo- a motion or just a clear direction?
I just need a clear direction.
Is everybody there on that?
I would, I would check the history before you write the attorney, cause it's probably somebody I'll talk about.
Okay, so we're clear?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that's safe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item G three, which you weren't here, we amended it and added the um, the tree ordinance. Ma- Megan, did you hand, wanna hand those out?
I don't have copies actually. Can you put it online?
Good, good, save streets.
Yeah.
So what I can do is I can, I.
Can you bring it up, put it on the screen? Do you have it electronic? That's what you have, spot?
Nope, I can try. I tried earlier.
Can I try and verbalize?
Please do well and.
So, while she's doing that, what she sent was the step one, the procedural, the conceptual site plan application. Um, the definition section, trees protected, canopy forested, canopy wooded, diameter breast height, and then the tree invasive. Um, remain the same. Um, the, the questions she's asking under the tree inventory, um, we go into a detail. One of the items required on the tree inventory is a table listing all of the protected trees to be preserved and removed with associated diameters, including trees within woods. It, a detailed tree inventory on the, the uh, tree inventory site plan. And then on drawings and illustrations need at, needed at final, um, she's proposing to cross out location, size and type of all single trees having a diameter breast height of four inches or greater. Wooded areas shall be deline- delineated by symbolic lines, tracing the spread. So basically what she's saying is for the final, we just need the same thing that we get at conceptual. And, and she's, she's questioning whether we still need the detailed uh, listing at conceptual. And personally, I understand that argument because if I'm thinking about this properly, if you, if we go this route, we're having no replacement plan. And we're having no fines. So what value is the inventory? To me, it, and I, I'm just talking out loud, thinking out loud here. It seems like the more important thing to understand is where the canopies are as well as maybe individual trees that aren't with, in a canopy and landmark trees.
Yeah.
And you essentially, you had a public hearing on these on May eighth. I just need a few tweaks based on the conversation that you had on Monday with the township board. Um, and so
Hands it down if you want.
It's, you've seen these definitions before. So any tree that's protected is.
Yeah. In her cover, she questioned what we need.
And then the wooded canopy, the breast diameter at breast height. And what's an invasive tree and.
I'm sorry, is the red, sorry, I haven't seen this. Is the red the additions?
The red is the addition. Thank you, I'm sorry. And then later on, if there's red in strikeouts, that's to be deleted.
Okay.
So then this was, the tree inventory needs to be part of it at conceptual. It can be waived. Um, but these would be all the things that you would be looking for. Um, and then what I, what Chair Scarborough was highlighting was this. This item six. And I believe that we added that later on in the process. I think it was Planning Commissioner Ritchie who suggested that we have a table listing all the ones that were to be preserved and to be removed so that you could easily calculate credits and replacements. Um, and my, I, based on the conversation we had with the township board, I felt like this might be just a little too onerous, maybe in their view at this point. If we're not giving credit for, on a, some sort of ratio for preserving trees or we're not having a fine for.
Can we talk about that for a second? Cause I was trying to follow your, you said, I don't know if this is really viable, if we're not doing credits. But wouldn't it still be good information at conceptual?
Yes.
Maybe not a complete inventory, let's talk about this. But like identifying, we think we wanna save these would be helpful. It wouldn't be a lot of work for a developer, I think. So I mean, parts of this I think would be, would be helpful.
If I may, one of the things I suggested, I asked Megan about was if we don't get the detail, seems like we should have some kind of a report on the quality of the canopy or the woodlands.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I, to, to make those decisions that you're talking about, Dave.
Yeah.
I think that the table we, idea we had that Ron was referring to was invaluable with Monarch. Cause we could quickly see like, hey, you're taking down two hundred trees. If you make this wall a foot taller, you can only take down a hundred trees like they're already doing, they're already doing a tree inventory, right?
Uh huh.
So
So if you did.
I mean, I, I just think that we should, these are tools we need, not tree ordinances and penalties and fines, you know, so.
We may have done it for one reason, but it still may have value to us.
A table or a diagram. Cause a table to me sounds like it's listing out numbers in a spreadsheet, but a diagram like, might be more like what we found with, with Monarch. Where it was like a flat map with, this is where they are and.
Monarch actually gave you both.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't they kinda go hand in hand because there's not enough room on the site plan?
Well, they had like a legend, right? Is that?
So if I believe Monarch had, uh, they had a map which showed you all of the different trees.
You can kinda see the density.
So you could see the density. Each of those were numbered. And then each number corresponded to a table that was on another sheet. Um, and I know as a reviewer, I found that very convenient.
Me too.
Because then, especially if a tree is somewhere where it's a little iffy or whatnot, it might make more of a difference if it's a box elder or if it's a seventeen inch oak.
So at the letter of the law, we're saying we want a table listing all the protected trees to be reserved. So if I was an applicant, I'm reading this to the letter, I'm gonna bring you a spreadsheet to say I have thirteen oak trees that are this big. I have four, you know, cherries that are this big, but we're not actually requiring them to show us where they're at on the property. Is that right?
You are number one, the location, size, health, common botanical name. So by the location, they have to give you the location somehow.
But the visual map was a better representation for, almost like a heat map of like, that would, that would actually be ideal. We could see where the big ones are here.
Cause that's, yeah. On the part that you striked out though, that's really, it, the most of that text is just saying just show us the line where the trees are being preserved and you don't need to put them in a category. That was, you know, that's kinda was our, uh, can you?
Yeah, I can.
Where it's on, it's right there.
That's on preliminary.
Right, so we're just, we're, we're looking for the size and tri- size and types of trees, four inches or greater. And the rest of it, all the verbiage basically says if you've got clusters, just show where they're at and you don't need to go through that process.
That's what I was gonna say.
Ron wants to talk.
I usually, I try, I try not to do that every time. No, I got, taken away from Monday. I, I guess the, um, the canopy thing, you know, to me, I took away that the board was, they thought doing a, a tree survey where you document where every tree is was, was onerous. So so, uh, what we talked about before, that people, like there's a canopy of trees, they would, they would mark that on the, on the print and say, you know, we're not touching this area. And so to me, they don't have to do any detailed documentation for that canopy area. Then that, that cuts out, could cut out a substantial number of items. I guess.
That's brilliant, yeah.
Uh, so I mean, I, I think if, and maybe we can lessen it down to if, you know, there's like landmark trees or, you know, what we call like major trees on the property, maybe, you know, just have them like identify those and, uh, and see what we could do, you know, to save those.
What, what are your thoughts on a, on a canopy that they are gonna cut down? Or a portion of a canopy?
Well, I guess, to me, they would show the canopy and then say they're taking out this area canopy. But there again, if, if we document that they have to put any, you know, like landmark or major trees, you know, however we wanna work. Like I said, I don't wanna just limit it. Instead of documenting every tree that they're cutting down, like say, in this cluster, there's, there's only one landmark tree. And, you know, are we saving that or are we cutting that down?
Does that hinder us? So you got a one acre lot and you're gonna put a five thousand square foot building on it right in the middle, you're cutting down all the trees. Doesn't matter what they are. We don't have any penalties and replacement yet, you know, that the board's going to approve currently. So it's kind of a mood point. These trees are all coming down. Does it matter what they were? Not unless. Not unless they're in that cluster was, uh, what kind of trees you call them? Landmark tree, you know, or special tree. So really, I think that because we're taking out the penalty part. I would like to know if there, anything that they're not, any, so what, we know what they're gonna cut, they're proposing to cut down, these are just being cut down. The ones they're proposing to save, that's the other half of it, which they don't really need the inventory. What I want to know is, you know, perimeter trees or landmark trees that are in the proposed clearing area. More than all the trees I know are coming down, cause there's no way to build a building without taking them down. You know, if that makes sense, you know what I mean, like I'm not interested in the fifty trees in the middle, if that's the only place the building can go. Like if there was a two foot wide hundred year old oak tree that was in the proximity of that, we would want to try to. Like Monarch, there's ones here or there, so I'm trying to find that balance, but in the, in, in, in a means of protecting our work and ease. I'd rather over ask than under ask if we can't figure out how to ask it correctly.
You do need the context though, so I really, I really like. For a rigid point, if, if I've got a huge lot and ninety percent of the trees I'm not touching, why make them count them? That was one part of the things we got from the board, right? You guys, you guys huge amount of trees that you're not gonna cut, but if we only made them count the ten that we're gonna take down. You kind of need that context, that that's like a small percentage of the overall lot, right? So we, we need, I think, to understand the, the overall lot, right, where the canopy stands and so on, without necessarily an inventory. So that we know that this percentage is small, so you could, you could have a, a, a lot or a series of lots where you're gonna preserve most of it. But there's some legacy trees that have to be right where you're going, you kind of, you kind of want that, so. I like the idea of not requiring them to count everything, but I need a context of, this is only five percent of the whole wooded area on a lot perhaps.
That's what I was getting at, to me, there still needs to be shown of the canopy or, or, you know, if there's a little cluster of trees, you know. Somehow mark that on there with, but you don't have to like necessarily inventory that, but, but if you are cutting down. To me, if you're cutting down a land trap, you know, landmark tree or, you know, if we have other special trees that we want to try and say. Those, we should be able to, like, they're out there clearing, it's like, hey, I got this twenty inch oak cut here.
Well, the whole point was the carrot instead of the stick, right, that was a conversation Monday with the board. So if we want developers to come in and provide a narrative of what they're doing with the, the foliage on a lot. Let's give them the ability, the tools to do that and say, I'm coming in, I took a hard look at this. I understand there's some incentives in here for me if I preserve legacy trees and so on, so here's my story. Now this eighty percent is retained, I'm gonna cut ten of these down, I'm gonna replace them with twenty of these. We want them to sell us on what they're doing, right? So we're turning this around from a penalty if you do this, to come convince us why you, we should let you do, you know, give you some leeway with other things. So somehow we, we need to, I, I really like where we're going with this, this lighten the load on counting things that don't matter, but still give us the context to the lot. If I, and I think Monarch is a good example of that, right, Monarch came in and, and kind of gave us that. So you could kind of visually see it and count them up at the same time.
But you need an inventory of some sort, or an idea.
But just maybe not as meticulous as, as, as we were thinking.
So does that, does this Megan tie into the concept I brought up of a, a general description of the quality of the woodlands or the canopy? Where it maybe takes an estimate of the number of trees and how big they are and.
So I think. Number one.
We're all speaking like a preservation proposal from the developer, they come in and part of their package would be, and here's how we'd like to approach preserving.
So, yeah. Because the desire of everybody that they catalog and they, that they show. It, it seems like you only want to have the location, size, health, and names of. What's typically called landmark trees, so the bigger trees. And the choice on that is either to, and how you define those is either to have a, a standard size eighteen inches is typically it. But a lot of ordinances have it by, and we had it originally by species and associated diameters to some trees. It just varies by species.
Grows slower.
But we had gone with the choice of eighteen inches before. So to the, to you, to, to all of you, would you, would you get a site plan? Do you want all trees that are eight inches in diameter or greater, or do you just want those landmark trees?
You mean specifically itemized, shown?
Shown, itemized.
I would think eight inches, we have four now in this thing. It says four. I think if we, you know, that, if we double the size necessary to inventory, I think that's being pretty generous.
I think all of them, I mean, and eight inches, but, because how do you survey?
But no, no, I, I'm just saying, you know, but instead of four, I can agree that we wouldn't be picking out of a four inch tree. Now, we're not talking clusters exactly, because those, they would identify as being protected. But I mean, I don't think it's asking too much to get every eight inch tree on the property. That's clearly going to be anywhere near, um, where the construction would be going.
Even if it, and you're saying even if it's in a cluster or standalone?
Well, that's where I'm on the fence there, I'm just, I'm trying to.
That's why I asked.
Trying to be, work with everybody, saying, I think four inches in this application since we lost part two.
Right.
Um, and what our real goal is, is to save some good sized trees and move things around, it's not gonna be because of a four inch tree. But if it's in a cluster or whatever, we're.
So I say, can I just come up with an idea of what trees you're trying to save, what size or higher or bigger?
I mean, do you think we could just say all eight inch trees on the property, uh, that, other than that are in designated canopy areas? Eight inches and above, she's got it.
I just, well, I didn't, so I, I'm typing live into a Word document, so. The location, size, health, common, and botanical name of all single trees having diameter of breast height of eight inches or greater outside of a wooded or forested woodland. So that's.
Okay, but don't leave out the landmark within a forest or canopy or, we want to see where those are.
But like I say, I think the, the inventory thing was the big heartache with the board. So, and, and then having to do with arborists and all that stuff, that's what, to me, they were freaking out about all that, so I, to me, let's have them. Uh, document the trees they're gonna cut, they want to cut down. Not, not the ones, I, I wanted to show, hey, we're saving these trees here, but we don't have to count them or inventory them or anything like that.
Right, you have to give the context of what that other, what remaining is, right, so like, yeah, if it's half a lot that's kept in your.
They need to verbalize the percentage of what the total trees is, by the ones they're cutting down. But it, to me, if they inventory the ones that, that they are targeting to cut down and there's landmark trees or, you know, bigger trees in those areas. We, we want those identified, so we can maybe like talk about those. Like, hey, if you move your building over ten feet, we can save these two trees.
We really ask them for a before and after, like we do with a lot of things on a site, right, before and after the, the impact. And they could say, I, I think it'd be okay if on that piece they're not touching, let's say it was an acre of land they're not even touching. And they said, we didn't do an inventory, but we estimate there's eighty trees in there. Oh, that, that would, to me, that would be fine, and we'd see evidence of that.
Can, um, I elaborate on your question, your proposal? So you want, you want an itemization of the number of trees and sizes that they're gonna cut down? Do you want, is it okay if he just tells you in this canopy, there's fifty trees cutting down? Or do you want it actually plotted on the site plan?
I guess, to me, I, I'm not even saying they have to like, uh, document every tree they're doing. I document, you know, like if we're gonna pick eight inch or ten inch, whatever the size is, anything that size or bigger, if they're cutting down, that's what we want to know about.
But do you want it plotted, or you just want them to represent that that's how many he's cutting down?
We want to see it on the plan.
You want it plotted.
Yeah, I want those, once they're cutting down, plotted.
So we can overlay it.
I'm not questioning, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think part of the heartache is that we're, we're documenting everything and we're not touching these back here. But so it's like everybody thought it was a big waste of time or money or whatever, so I think if we just concentrate on what they are cut down. If they're of the, whatever size we deem, uh, that we want to incentivize to keep.
And some description of the stuff that's, that's left, so otherwise you end up with a, the old George Carlin bit, you know, the scores of sports teams last night. It was eight, five, thirteen. Doesn't, doesn't make any sense.
As I said, I'd like to keep the, whatever we're gonna save, whether it's a landmark tree or just a, a tree of this diameter or bigger. And I guess I, I'm an arborist, so I don't want to say, you know, eight inch, twelve inch, fifteen, what, what's the right size? You know, cause like I said, there's, you know, a maple tree versus oak tree, might be totally different.
A Japanese maple that's eight inches is an old tree compared to. Hey, I'm just telling you, that's why you gotta know.
So, so, okay. So, so you want to see the location of trees and canopies proposed to be preserved? And you don't necessarily.
No, we want to see the ones that are cut down.
The ones that are cutting, proposed to be cut.
So I, I should take that out?
Well, I don't, it doesn't, I think both, it's part.
I guess documentation of, of canopies and stuff, but not. I don't think itemization of, of the rest of trees is necessary, just.
Two I is what you want to keep, the location of trees and canopies proposed to be preserved is kind of, we're getting away from counting, right? So there'd be a, I'm, I'm imagining a plan.
No, timeout, we want them to show canopies that are gonna be preserved.
Right, I said that.
I thought you said take that out.
No, no, the, the, the counting of the ones that are gonna be preserved, we're saying we can back away from that, sorry.
So, and then on the trees to be removed, trees and canopies to be removed?
We'd want to count.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we want to know what you're taking down.
And then that's for them to tell us that here's why we think this is the best. We, what we really need to talk about at some point though is, if we do this, how can we incentivize, right? What can we give someone to, to do a great job here, and I think that's maybe a deeper discussion.
Well, that's gonna be weighed against the beefed up landscape ordinances that we're doing. So the credits would be against the, cause we're talking about redoing the landscaping ordinance to make the caliper of replantings larger. To provide incentive to preserve.
Right, and this is, so I'm saying, this is the best thing, this is the easy thing for me to do, but I'd like to do this and take advantage of the incentives.
I could save these trees and not have to pay for all of these other trees that now just got bigger. You know, is the, I think is the goal, you know, yeah.
And our safety net is if they do, then we have a plan to put bigger trees in right off the bat.
So we're gonna, you know, wherever a certain parameter around the proposed footprint is where we're really interested in.
That's what we zero out.
Right, like I say, if it's something, you know, two foot away from the house and you move the house over a little bit. But that encroaches on the setback or something, maybe that's something we could talk about.
So maybe it's gotta be anything within ten feet of the proposed disturbed area. You know, that you're proposing on disturbing, just whatever's adjacent to that, cause then, Ron, to your point, we're in a shifting mode.
I'm just saying, now they have a reason why they're documenting the ones they're cutting down, because, and like I say, to me, it should only be the ones that have a certain size. You got ten little two inch trees or, it's like, yeah.
What, what I like about this is it makes them think about it, it makes someone think with this, hey, what am I doing and can, is there a better thing? That I can get out of it if I tweak it, it gives them a reason to think through it a little bit more carefully.
At conceptual, which is when we want to do it in the beginning.
Well, it also catches, I'm sorry, I know we're going all over the place here, but also catches the, the, I don't know, we have this many people like this anymore, the developers that are out there going, okay, I know what I want to do. Well, I'm not, I'm just gonna take all these down, right, cause it was like, well, that's, that's what they want us to count, I gotta count all these, you know, and suddenly it becomes a little bit more sacred, right? So you're looking to minimize damage, you'll get the Mike Clarks out there with bulldozers, it's just like, let's just get it all off now.
Can we get, are you ready Megan?
So this is, based on your conversation, this is kind of how I redoubled, so you've got the location, size, and health, and.
You're talking about single I, you started there?
Single I, of all the single trees of eight inches or greater outside, wooded or forested canopies. The location of all the wooded, wooden forests canopies located whole and in part in the site. And they are delineated by symbolic lines, that's the same language you had before in the. In the final site plan. The location in tree, of trees and canopies proposed to be preserved, just flat out, we don't need the documentation of what they are. The location, size, health, common botanical names, a number of protected trees to be removed, and the location percentage of trees to be preserved. I guess that would be to be removed.
Can you go back up a little?
Yep, yeah.
I think I, are we all kind of, sorry. Are we saying we don't need this anymore, right, we're gonna ask them to count the ones that they're removing? By the canopy and location.
She's talking about trees that aren't within a canopy or woodland, so if they're like standalone.
Yeah, but let's say I have ten acres and I'm just impacting one acre. There's a canopy up there, there's standalone trees up there, but I'm not touching any of those, we said, we don't want them to count those, right?
Well, then they would delineate with the line we're telling them that they can, the, that they can, what's the wording you had there?
Impacted area?
Well, we're defining canopy and woodland as a certain size.
Symbolic lines.
Yeah.
So what if you have ten trees that are up against the main road?
As long as they're not saying they're gonna remove them, I thought we were saying, we're just gonna count the ones we're gonna remove. And describe the rest of the property.
But how do you know those trees exist? If they're not, if there's ten, ten trees on, along the frontage of a main road. They're not in a canopy, they're not in a woodland, how do you know they're there unless they're shown on the site plan?
They, they'd show them in the, in the, the plan as, as.
A canopy.
A canopy or.
Well, no, because the canopy as defined is a bigger area, correct?
Yeah, it's like a quarter of an acre.
But then if they were planning on touching them, they'd have to show them.
You're saying we might miss those standalone trees that are hanging out?
Yes, that's why she's got I in there.
I think if they got an inventory, a couple of, another ten standalones, better to be on the safe, safe side, you know?
I get it, thank you, I didn't quite understand.
Those are ones that just aren't gonna fit in, like this is an area of foliage.
Already catering to the development of this.
Well, that webinar that we listened to the other day, one thing he said is that you should always have an impact analysis. Of the trees in the area, so if you're, if you have ten acres and you're only building on two acres. You're not impacting that other acres. And if you have this impact analysis, that's what details all the trees within the area that you're actually doing construction.
It's kind of what we're creating here, right, is the way we want them to do an impact analysis.
Right, right.
Okay, so. So we're good on I, double I?
Yep, I like that.
Triple I?
Yeah, cause it's generally like, here's a canopy over here, right, am I touching it? It's shown on a plan.
Are you saying that canopy is a quarter acre, is that what you're saying?
Canopy, there's.
Is there a way to just say like if it's one or two trees, uh, instead of calling it a canopy which has to meet that requirement? Could just say, uh, you know. Tree grouping or something like that? And put an approximate spot there?
You could add a cluster of trees. Yeah.
Stragglers.
I think at some point it just becomes easier to plot the individual trees. If it's only five trees in a grouping.
Yeah, I'd rather they just label them.
I mean, so.
That's, that was the heartache, they had those, when you had to have like arborists to identify them, so.
Well, they're gonna have to get over that.
I'm just saying it, but if they, if they document them without, uh, if they're saving them and it's just documented.
Well, this is still gonna have to be prepared by an arborist, right?
I don't know. Is it?
That was a big heartache, I.
It said arborist, landscape architect, or somebody else, so.
If I were a developer, I would say, can you give me an example of this, like in that, and I, I don't, I'd look at the ability department, have to show me one of these works of before and after that I can, I can get.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I get them all the time.
That's what Jason was saying, that we need to have like a, a documentation thing, kind of like we have like on some of the other site plan stuff.
Like C figure one, C figure two.
Here's how you document a canopy, here's how you document the trees or.
Yeah, I, and like you essentially got it for Monarch and you essentially got it for Clarkston Veterinary Clinic.
Very good case study.
Both of those gave you all the information that was required on these.
And were they arborists or landscape architects?
Landscape architects.
I, I mean, I think they were probably there as landscape architects, who, who, who did it.
Those are good bookends too, ones that had much more and ones that were smaller.
Yeah.
The trouble is if you go back on the veterinarian site, uh, that was wooded before and somebody clear cut the thing years ago.
Yeah, but now it was easy.
So there was only a couple of trees left to document.
But that, but I will say that that is a good example of why you want the health of the tree.
Yep.
Um, it's cause they had an old oak.
Exactly where they were.
And we talked about it specifically.
And we talked about it specifically, and then when you looked at it, it wasn't healthy.
But, but in fairness, now, even if we didn't require it, that would have been an easy one, where the person was that, we could just list them all, right, cause they were so.
Yeah.
It would have been easier for them to do that, that they kind of.
So are we good on item four?
I think so.
And moving down to five?
That's what's being removed, we want to know that.
We're removing the table?
No, no, we're, that's the table of what's being removed.
Oh, okay, okay.
Table only, well, and the table only lists what. Table only, well, and the table only lists what they're removing.
Okay, to be, to be removed.
Yeah, so it's the opposite. We're now managing the opposite.
Wait, you got two twos up there.
Two two.
Thank you.
Two plus two is four.
Man, are we accommodating or what?
Yeah, we are.
Selling our soul here.
I wanna make sure, Megan, I wanna make sure we're not, I, I think landmark trees regardless of whether they being saved or cut down or what need to be shown.
Um, all right, I'm just gonna play a little devil's advocate with you. If they are, we're asking them for the location, size, health of anything eight inches or greater. So, if it's outside a canopy, those would be shown.
Right.
If it's inside a canopy, unless it's gonna be removed, what does it matter?
That's true.
Okay, by your point.
So-
And it helps limit the inventory.
Well, wait.
I know it'd be nice to know that, but-
Would it be nice to know if we wanna get him to move the building a little bit? To save this landmark tree that you're proposing, it'd be nice to know there's another one over here.
Well, that's why he said, Sam, didn't you say something about ten feet within the envelope or the survey area?
There was, we, we could do it, we could, we could ask for where it says remove, the trees you're going to remove could be more specific and say, you know, within ten, twenty, thirty feet of, of the proposed disturbed area. So it gives, gives you a little picture of, of it, you know, but I, I think it's a moot point at that point that, I think that by doing this and it, it's a little, as long as we know what's, what, what's being, what they're proposing to be affected now, we, at that point, we could, if they said, well, we, we start saying, hey, we gotta start shifting things or the driveway's not gonna work, then we would have the right at that point, cause this is a conceptual,
Yeah.
Uh, to say at the conceptual, hey, we wanna know a little bit more about what's, what's over here before you come back for final. You know, or for, or for, you know, before you come back to us, so it's-
Are you retaining us the right to ask for more detail?
We, we always have the right to ask for more detail.
You can always have the right to ask for more detail. And then if you look at, um, V or Roman numeral five, it says the table listing all protected trees to be removed with the, with, within wooded canopies and forest can, canopies with, when tree removal is proposed within those canopies. So you would get any landmark tree that's being removed from a canopy.
Is it, I don't wanna pick, but is that the right term now? All protected trees to be removed? Why are they protected now?
Um, I think that was, that's the definition.
But that's when we're gonna have an ordinance that protected them, cause aren't they just designated trees?
It's just, if you're removing trees, you're supposed to document, so.
But it's just a listing of all trees to be removed. I, I don't think we're protecting them anymore.
No, we have, because protected trees-
If you're trying to cut down this? Well, we don't have an ordinance that says you must not remove these trees, so I think this term was from that. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get it.
There, it's like if I were a developer, it's like, why are they protected? Is there some state statute or something?
I guess it's, yeah, the mood, trees is trees.
Just trees.
I, no, I, I totally disagree with you guys. Protected tree, I mean, if they're sick, they're not protected. If they're invasive, they're not protected. If they're under the DBH, they're not protected.
Why are they protected?
If they're not an invasive, if they're invasive species, they're not protected.
So, under the description.
What's a protected tree, I guess? Let me ask it that way.
Oh.
Under what statute are they protected?
It gets back to the-
Well, I got a definition.
This, this definition that's at the, at the very beginning.
Yeah, but that, that implies that we've approved a zoning ordinance that protects trees, right?
No.
I, I would say that it's just that you're saying that this tree, these type of trees should be protected, and what you're saying at site plan is that you wanna see where they are.
Change the word protected to valued. I mean, it's, I'm not suggesting to do that, but-
Okay, I think I see, so, I think this made sense when we're doing an ordinance that was gonna protect them, so.
I, I got confused with that early on because there's also preserved trees.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is like a tree protection ordinance, that's why, I think we came up with that term. I don't wanna confuse people coming going, why is this protected? There's no law, it says an oak tree's protected, so maybe we do have to change that term.
Did it say trees to be preserved? How are you putting it?
I mean, it, so, so this is the definition, so these are the definitions in the beginning, it's not, and there shouldn't be regulation in definitions. So, I think I can come up with a different word for-
Desired or provided, yeah.
Desireed, yeah.
It just, it kind of implies there's something out there.
Yeah.
I don't mean to cause problems, I just, I was reading that as a developer model.
Get this. How about, uh-
It's like a protected, you know, cannibal species.
Well, what you, what we could just do-
How about a healthy, how about a healthy tree?
Well, let's, let's let Megan come up with it.
Preferred trees, or like if you said-
It goes back to the thing, let's just pick the size. If it's fifteen foot tall and eight inches diameter, you know, those are the trees we're trying to preserve.
Are trees to protect?
A tree is defined as.
Okay.
I'm gonna stop my-
Megan, we're trying to say something about the trees that we want, trees that we like.
Megan, I think Megan knows what we want. Are we all in consensus, on board with that?
We think we can get this through, is that what we're saying?
We hope we can.
Compromised enough?
Megan, what, I don't wanna interrupt, are you okay with this?
We doubled the size of the trees.
We need to make sure that that's emphasized. Here's, here's what we did.
I can rewrite this and bring this back next month.
Should we do that?
I think that's probably best.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Really, do you think we should send it to the board?
Do we, do we send it to the board or we have a public hearing?
Why don't you send it to the board?
You don't-
No, we don't need a public hearing.
We send it to the board.
Yeah.
Because we have to get it approved. This is a, a, an ordinance change.
Okay, sorry.
Megan, does-
I took it to the board. They could differentiate between the two ordinances we were asking to change, A and B.
But it's still a change of the ordinance, you're right, right, sorry.
So, I don't, and we've agreed that it's a minor text amendment, so we don't need to have another public hearing. If the board is in, if, uh, I mean, I don't wanna wait another month to take, to take this to the board if we don't have to.
Well, okay.
You know, and Megan, I would ask too, please, that we, obviously, you've made some tweaks and you saved the old one, but to show the board that we've, again, made significant concessions to what tools we believe would make us be able to do a better job.
You'd like them to see a hardline copy, wouldn't you?
Well, well, I'd like them to see, we just went from four to eight inches, we doubled the size of the tree that we're asking them to inventory, you know?
I'm worried about the can-
And the point doesn't change, this is stuff we need to do our job better, and we're the ones who are qualified to know that, not them. We just need to let them know that we made more concessions, you know?
Megan, does it make sense that, I, I, I think I asked you the question, include language about, um, what's the purpose of this?
Um, you're changing things that are procedural, so I think we could do that in the cover memo to the board, but I don't think it's necessarily, or you could do a small preamble to the ordinance to change the ordinance, but-
If it doesn't add value to the ordinance, then, no, okay.
I would like to think by now the board members, people have a little more understanding of what we're trying to do.
No, I, from what I've-
Cause it's out, it's too high.
Reading ordinances, having things that justify their existence helps your battle in court legally, right, Megan?
It does, so, I think we could put something in the cover memo to the board or put something, usually there's a little preamble in front of, this is either a resolution or something to change the, or we could put it in the main.
Okay.
Who's gonna present this? Does it go, does it go to Chuck or how does that work?
Well, technically, the planning commission should put it on the MAF as an, or, as an, as a, as an ordinance amendment, would be done through the planning administrator.
And if you are recommending, if you want this to go on the township board's agenda, you should make a formal recommendation of this changed language that we discussed tonight. So there should be a formal motion with a recommendation.
Yeah, that we send it to them, yeah.
Yeah, so you would need to do that.
Is that the opportunity where we say, here's, here's what you asked for, we think, you know, after discussions and tweaking, and these are the types of things we remove to make it, you know, to, which we think more conform to what we discussed in our joint meeting?
You could say that as part of the motion, yes.
Something like that.
Well, I'm more apt to, I'm not as much in favor of trying to explain to them how we are accommodating them as much as this is like the minimum we feel we need to do our job, you know, and stay with the tools we need to do our job, you know? I mean, it's, uh, it's, uh, the, the whole thing's absurd, but it should be a no brainer. We should be able to just send it to them and they should agree to it. It's a procedural thing, it's not a penalty thing, it's, you know?
Right.
I guess, one other thing that we did talk about or didn't see in the, oh, the six items that were there, was the, talk about the arborist. I still think that was, that was a major heartache for them as well. So, to me, I think we could lower that down to landscape architect.
That's in there. It's a registered forester, arborist, or landscape architect.
They can use any.
Well, and I guess, um, that, that would be only to identify the, the landmark trees, not every tree.
That's a tree.
To me, to me, we're, you know, we were only gonna identify the, uh, the major trees that were cut down or the other landmark trees, not in a canopy.
We are giving them the option to use a landscape architect.
Okay, well, I just-
They have that option.
You know, I think it started out though as, I don't know if we could just put landscape architect or, or creator or something, so.
You know, you start talking about arborists and all this. They're scared of the word arborist, don't even know what, yeah.
Sounds like money.
It sounds like expensive.
It's kinda like, you know, you gotta have the professor come instead of, uh-
Well, landscape architects, pretty much every guy that comes in here selling, selling these ideas to us is a landscape architect, so that's, uh, they're already, they wouldn't have to bring in someone special to do it.
No, it's just, do we care? As long as we get the quality information. I mean, I got a small lot like the veterinary clinic, if they, if somebody in the family really know how to do this, do we care?
Well, you're just, an engineer could do it with the right information, it's just on the blueprint, you know?
That's why I was trying, I was just trying to lower that bar, cause that seemed to be a big heartache to everybody, the, the arborist thing was-
Yeah.
What if we, how about if we moved the word arborist to the la, end of the, uh-
Well, I was gonna say something else to start out with.
It's just a certified name.
All right, move the order.
We're trying to do it.
Worst method.
Can you get an abbreviation for arborist?
Yeah.
Put that in there.
Arm? Dear co-pilot.
Uh, Megan, this may be a stupid question, but do we currently require, like, if I'm picturing the site plan of canopies and everything, do we, do we get sort of an overlay on, is that a standard requirement of where the improvements will be in relationship to these canopies and stuff?
Sometimes you get, sometimes you don't. The best way to do it would be to require preserve trees to be shown on the landscape plan, so that you can see them in concert with what landscaping is proposed. They don't, some, they don't always do that, and sometimes it's that they, they're not communicating, because they might've had, they might've had an arborist go out and do the tree survey when they did the initial survey of the property. Um, and then, when you get to the landscape architect, that's farther down the line, and so they don't always, they don't always communicate.
Overlay?
Yeah.
Jason?
Can we just take one more quick look at that F? It says tree inventory prepared by State of Michigan, blah, 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 or with the information with below, is that, is that the right phrase, that last part?
No.
With the information.
Grammar's off.
There we go. Okay, gotcha, that makes me happy.
Okay.
I submit the information below, so I don't need to have the guys.
Okay.
I mean, it's, we're just sending a message, but we got, but we gotta know what's there before we start, so I think this is pretty, should do it for us.
So if we, if our motion includes, uh, what changes made to the document tonight, we don't, we don't need to itemize everyone, do we?
No. So, but we're still on, we're still on, I, I'm still hung up on tree protected, and whether you wanna keep that in or not. One of the things that you could do is to take that tree protected out, just define what's a forested canopy and a wooded canopy, cause those are new words, and then within the, one through, within the tree inventory listing, just refer to something of a DBH that's in good health and not in invasive.
The reason it hung me up is because previously our tone was, they'll shout out, remove trees, and we must list all of them. Our, our tone now is more identify everything you plan to remove and shows why that's, you know, uh, uh, the best, the best plan in, in terms. So it's, it kinda took away why we called it a protected tree, cause we were protecting them to, you know?
Can you say trees to remain?
Again, I feel like that's something that's, but I feel like you can do the same thing by just changing the wording in the tree inventory list, so that it's any tree eight inches in DBH or greater, if it's in good health and not invasive.
Take it, I don't wanna be overly prescriptive, figure, figure out some of the rules.
Does, does the group agree with that?
Yeah.
Sure.
I like it the way it is, but I'm open to change.
Okay, I, I, write myself a note, and we'll do it that way, and then I think I am confident that I can make all the changes that reflect your conversation and have it go to the township board, if that's the recommendation that you wanna make tonight.
I agree. So, pretty thorough.
Megan, tell me if this is a sufficient motion. I will make a motion that we recommend sending
Direct the planning department.
That, direct the planning department to seek approval from the board.
I, if, Mr. Chair, what I would say is, if, I would say that you make a, you make a motion to recommend zoning ordinance amendments to section two oh two, section six oh five, and section six oh six and six oh seven as discussed and presented um, at the planning, at this meeting.
I will make a motion to recommend approval by the township board to the amendments to section two oh two, the amendments to section six oh five, and the section six oh seven, um,
In section six oh-
As presented, at six, and six oh six, if I missed that one, I'll add that, as presented at the planning commission meeting tonight with the amendments, uh, and adjustments noted and made at the meeting.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Okay. Thank you, folks. Megan, Joe.
Can we get a copy of this final paper that's gonna go, we're not gonna vote on it, we're not waiting for it?
Yeah, of course you could get a copy, yeah. I will, I will send it.
Everybody should, yeah.
I don't necessarily have everybody's email, but I will send it to Sheriff Scarborough, um, with the CC, CC and Mr. Altman, I'm sure they'll distribute it.
Okay, I'll forward it. Just remember, no discussion.
We should be able to get it on the, the next meeting then, not Tuesday, but the one after that would be our, the next possible.
You gonna do the May?
No, they, they're supposed to do the May.
Brian will do it. You and Brian will do the May?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't-
I'm gonna make it to the first one in October.
Megan said she'll-
September is my priority.
It is, we got the, we got the-
Then I can work on a cover memo that documents the changes that you made tonight, um, and how it's changed from, how it changes from the existing zoning ordinance, what was presented before.
Okay. Guys, I, I just wanna, Megan said she'll send it to me, I'll forward it to you. Just remind you all, no discussion.
No, I'll reply.
Yeah.
Thank you, Megan, for the rezoning work, where it's long overdue.
Yes. She got it done in her hurry.
Glad to get that, get that going, anxious to get that going.
Now, do we wanna talk about the next phase tonight, or we wanna just focus on getting this part through for now?
What's the next phase?
The next phase is, Megan had floated the idea, and Dick had floated the idea of, of beefing up our landscaping requirements and, um, providing some- Uh, beefing up our landscaping requirements and, um, providing some. Incentives for developers to use existing trees to meet those requirements and stuff like that.
Yeah, I think that was our compromise for.
Yes.
Losing the tree ordinance.
But shouldn't we wait and see if this is approved first before we?
Well.
No, two different things.
It is two different things, well, but.
Maybe we can start.
How do we do that? How do we do the next step if they won't go with this step?
The next step, well, two different things. If they don't wanna make the developer give us the tools we need to do our job, that's one thing. What would be required of the developer, you know, when they do come to do their job is another thing. They're absolutely two completely different things, in my opinion.
Second, second one's requirements for the landscape plan, so.
Right, so.
Change and interrupt, you know, increase.
So, Megan, are, are you prepared to talk about that tonight?
Um, Sheriff can talk about it in general. Um, so. What you would do in your landscaping requirements is, for instance, um, right now you have it's eighty percent opacity. Instead of having eighty percent opacity, you would probably have, um, a very prescriptive screen. To say that it's X amount of evergreen trees and bushes.
Per foot or something?
Per foot, yeah. Um, and then, um, also you could then. Another thing you can do in terms of street trees is, instead of requiring the street trees, which you do in most cases. If there are certain areas, like maybe the Dixie Highway overlay, um, in a certain area, you might say. The, this, this landscaping can be substituted by preserving, um, a vegetated buffer that's at least twenty feet deep or something like that. Um, I think what I'd be interested in hearing, what would be helpful to us to craft some things to bring back to you is. You know, what are your goals? What are you looking for in these developments? I mean, if I was asked to talk for trustee Morocco, I would say that. You will always want there to be twenty to fifty feet buffers, and with as much vegetation preserved inside of those as possible, and you'd rather see that than new shrubs and bushes.
Yeah.
Um, but I haven't heard from, from the rest, uh, yeah. The rest of you haven't been as vigorous in your vocality about this as, as, as Mr. Morocco has, and so I think what, what your goals are. And what you wanna see from those landscaping and what you wanna get, um, are you comfortable with one-to-one trade-offs or ratio trade-offs? Um, is it that you want to, that to be a negotiation at the table, rather than. Um, would be more appealing to the developers, they know if I preserve a sixteen-inch tree, I get. And at my minimum tree that I have to put in is six inches, I get three, I get a one-to-one, I get three trees out of that. Like, are you willing to make those trade-offs or things like that?
For me, personally, the screening is. Like, for me, that would be the most important. The s- screening from the s- screening from the street side.
Commercial, commercial doesn't want any screening, you know, they want everything wide.
Well, since she already threw me under the bus, knows what I'm thinking, I'm gonna elaborate. My biggest issues are, and I've always said this, and you can go back, is, you know, we wanna see less of development from the road. So, I wanna see if, now, this might not pertain to what we're talking about, but we're doing trade-offs. Boulevard entrance ways, then the development is behind there, so. Remember, the, the whole reason we're going through this exercise is because they're trying to protect developers from cutting down trees on future residential neighborhoods. They not, no, they didn't seem to care much about commercial. It was all about a future residential neighborhood, so our protections would be, from my opinion. Larger setbacks off the road. Um. Also beefing up the commercial side, because we have very minimal buffering from commercial to residential, beefing that up. Beefing up the, the size of the caliper of trees. Required for revegetation, because if you could trade us a bunch of, uh, brush and growth and twenty, fifty, you know, the setbacks, of course, need to be bigger. I think that twenty foot's not enough to provide an actual wall of vegetation, but then. It's a larger caliper, so if you have to do a berm along Dixie Highway that's, you know, two hundred feet long, and you have to put four or five caliper trees in there opposed to two-inch. Trees, it's a significant deterrent to purchase more mature trees. So, that was what Dick was kinda floating around. Those were the things that I think were discussed with other board members randomly, just of. Those are the types of incentives that are going to encourage the developer to not clearcut, because. That's going to be more expensive than the money you save on the clearcutting, you know what I mean? And I think that's, so those are. This is, you know, that, that's the intent to be the second, the, to, now, there's no penalties. The penalty is. You, you gotta, you gotta do better. You gotta, nowadays, we expect better, bigger trees, bigger shrubs, you know, bigger calipers. You know, if you're gonna mow everything down. Uh, and then the lots that have nothing, this helps with that, because it just boosts up our landscape to make it nicer and better. You know, it's a win-win for everybody, you know, um, so that's. You, tell her what you guys think.
I, I agree with what, what Sam said. My only caveat is, I don't wanna lose sight of internal landscaping and, and trees. Um, I'd like to beef that up too, uh, not just buffers and perimeters, um.
We talked about, um, foundation plantings, requiring those in commercial and office.
Also don't wanna lose sight of a, a canopy that might run through the middle of a piece of property. I mean, these, these greenways are important.
Well, they're very desirable for the owners too. I mean, think of, uh. Shoot, what's the name of that? Was it, not Northridge, the other one, Pine Vista. Imagine Pine Vista, sorry, there's only a couple of us maybe they're familiar with, but they've got homes. And then it got like kind of an open space between, so that they can see each other in the backyard. Just imagine if that was just lush vegetation, it would, the whole, the whole spirit of the neighborhood would be different.
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I, I don't wanna lose sight of that.
Except for those are supposed to be walking areas in between there.
Well, you could still keep a walking path, under the big trees.
But. I, I just think it's important, like a couple of things. Um, I'd kinda like to have part of this conversation. At a meeting where we got it on the agenda, because I think the public could have some good input, and I, I, I'm okay with this, just talked about it, the township boards, I think going into. The, the changes that we made earlier were, are okay, because we just had a very live discussion, but. I think as we talk about this more, I'd like to get some, make sure that we got it on the agenda, so people can come in if they want to.
Yeah.
But I, I agree with most of what was said, a little bit different. I, I do think it's very, very important. That if a developer comes, comes in and says, "I think I can retain a lot," so just how much relief am I gonna get? But they can clearly see that, right? That here's. So, because we've talked about beefing up and making more, but if we, if we bring somebody in and make a lot of sacrifice to maintain trees for us, trees that we like. And then we just beat the hell out of them on landscaping anyway, you haven't really done much. It's like, well, I, I worked so hard and you didn't give me any relief. So, I wanna make sure we have that clear, whatever relief you wanna give. And the only other thing is, I, I'm a little bit, I'm very similar to what Sam's looking for. Um, except I'm not always on the page of, um, you know, buffering. And I think sometimes we overdo it on that, and I've seen developments where we come in and residential before. Where so, and, and the developers do this too, by the way, they, I wanna get, you know, the old neighborhoods there, they don't wanna see all this, they put in all kinds of foliage. And we end up compartmentalizing neighborhoods sometimes, right? Where, you know, I watch the kids struggle to get through bushes to get to their friends on the other side. I don't know that we really wanna keep creating that. Sometimes, I just want. The new site to be beautiful. I'm okay if they see it from the road, and I'm okay if you see it from the other neighborhood. Now, it's always very site-dependent, right? But sometimes I think we take a rule of thumb and we apply it every time, and we end up with these little cages around our developments of, of landscaping. And, you know, as a parent, with, I have little kids, I'd love to see them running between the neighborhoods and, you know, just, it was just an interference. So, I think we gotta be careful about, you know, universally applying some of this. Sometimes, I don't know that you need a heavy, heavy buffer between the other development on the other side. Now, if it's commercial or residential, I get it, but sometimes, you know, urgent care you wanna see, or veterinary clinic. You know, you don't have to like completely shield everybody with it, so I wanna keep an open mind about that. That's one thing we could do, is like, hey, this particular use. We don't need to necessarily, you know, shield them entirely from the neighborhood next to it. The veterinary clinic's a good example of that.
You can't isolate a particular use.
Yeah, I think, I think we get a little bit overboard sometimes, and we, we see that if you, if you, if you go through, so. Um, that's something I'd just throw out as a, as a, you know, something that, that keeps the, the neighborhood appeal and contiguous development. We talked about keeping character like along Sashaba Road. You don't do that when you box them all in with fences and landscaping, so it's just something to, to think about.
Belinda?
I, I, I think it's site-specific. I mean, as far as, uh, the buffering, you know, I think it depends on what properties you're talking about. Is it commercial next to residential, or? I think it's very site-specific.
Agreed, yeah. Joe, you done, Belinda?
I'm done.
You better ask, you know.
No, I, I, I agree, I mean. I think the last two comments were basically about flexibility. And, you know, I don't know what, you know, how you build in the opportunity to be flexible when you have to come up with an ordinance that isn't flexible. By design. I mean, so, yes, I guess we have to be careful about how we do that, because we need the flexibility, but we gotta have some rules. But we wanna be able to change the rules context-oriented.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I mean, we all agree to that, I think. Now, it's how to do it.
Yeah.
Is, you know, I'm struggling with, it's just. You've got all the answers.
Can I just make a quick point? Well, Ron didn't talk yet.
Yeah, Ron, Jason.
I guess, I was gonna, I was gonna change gears from buffering to one other item. I guess, to me, we also need to, in our landscaping plan, come up with a way to, uh. I guess, perpetuity, uh, you know, make sure they, uh, maintain landscaping. Because that's what's happened a lot of times, it, it looks good for a number of years, but maybe they change owners or whatever, and then all of a sudden, you know. Or, you know, somebody new comes in, they cut everything down, but there's no, it, they don't bring it back to whatever the minimum was, uh, that was required originally, and. I guess I, I, I'm starting to see that on Dixie Highway already, where, you know, there was, trees been there for thirty years, they had grown up, they've been pretty good now, it's like. Here, we're hacking them down to.
Yeah.
Because the guy, well, you can't, you can't see my business. It's like, well, it's like, and I, I say this all the time when people come in, it's like, we don't wanna see your business. It's like, you, you want everybody to see your business, but we don't wanna see the business.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why you have a sign out there, "Turn here," so it's like, but anyway, that's, but there should be some. You know, if, if they cut their tree down, then, you know, they, they should still have to meet some.
Yes.
Minimum requirement, and, uh, I don't know how we put that in the ordinance as well, because I don't think we have any, uh, ongoing way to regulate that, and that's, you know.
Enforcement, but there isn't any.
Well, so I'm getting it, there's no way to enforce it, because we don't really have a, a rule of, if you cut something down, what do you do, so.
Right.
I've got it.
People wanted to look good right away, too, right? They're like, instantly good, they're like, okay, five years down the road.
They don't care.
What happened here, right?
And I, I use, I don't wanna beat up, talk about, but I use them as an, uh, example all the time. They had these nice, I don't know, cranberry trees, they, nice umbrella-looking trees. Uh, and they had color to them and everything, and there was, I don't know, half a dozen of them, I don't remember exactly how many, but they cut all those down and put in some like, uh. Some bushes, those flowering bushes, whatever. Well, half of those died out within the next year or so, but, so it's just, that's the way it just stays.
They're supposed to replace them. That's our, our township's enforcement.
But I'm just saying, the, the bushes don't really make up for a tree, you know, to me, we have minimum tree amounts and all that type of stuff. We just need to make sure that. Is in there, but it's, but it's something that they understood they have to take, you know, be year after year, not just, not just at the beginning, and then when it dies off. Okay, I don't wanna do anything anymore, so.
Jason?
No, no, I was just kinda flagging you that he had something to say. I think Sam said something.
I just had a couple of things. On Ron's point, though, that, that, we were told at the last meeting that the site plans go in perpetuity with the project. So, that's something that we need to work internally with our township to do a better job of.
Except for, except if the businesses are sold, there is no site plan anymore.
Well, that's in some cases, but there's a caveat. We can work around that too, I believe. The other thing with Dave's point. The next, I think, Megan, we're gonna, you know, after, the next meeting, we're gonna have a public hearing on this, obviously, because it's going to the board, so we'll, you know, we'll, we'll be. Giving her the basis to start with as good, and then make sure to get a lot of public input, I think, on that. Um, as far as the buffering goes, I picture it more as mostly between commercial, multifamily, residential, you know, not neighborhood to neighborhood. You know, I think that's, I built a subdivision in Springfield Township, where we had a fifty-foot no-touch zone between our backyards. And it was put on the residence we were building for, and they couldn't put a place set in there, they couldn't mow the grass, and it's like you're. You're buffering to a buffering, you know, or you're buffering to a, a common area, like seem ridiculous. My thing is, is that we have, uh, the opaqueness that Megan's talking about is the buffering that is where you really get your value. To create that with larger caliper trees and bigger trees is very expensive, and the savings. So, we would have to put, in a situation where it's required by ordinance to put that buffering in, is where I think the value. Uh, that trade-off's gonna come for us. You know, I agree, we don't wanna box everybody in, but on, uh, at point. On Sashaba going north, the master plan calls for those buildings to be back off the road and tucked into the trees, unlike this section of the corridor. So, it's the exact opposite of walkability and stuff up by the curb, so it is very individual lot, but I think we're doing a good job of creating. Better guidelines and better minimums to start the conversation with, you know, is, is what I'm thinking, you know.
And it's, it's, to me, it's also about buffering. I think in many instances, we've done a, a bad job of the buffering along the main arteries.
Agree. I don't wanna see backyards right up against the sidewalk, you know.
Okay, I sent this email last week. I sent you a copy in to Brian, I'd like to read it tonight. At the September twelve twenty-four planning commission meeting, Dort Financial came before our PC and requested.
Wait, can I ask you to wait? That, that's, um.
He's talking about perpetuity. That's a perfect example.
Well, it's about enforcement. You can bring that up under open discussion.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Okay.
Let's, let's get this item done. I, I wanted to encourage you, and I'd see what other people think about, um. In our overlay zones, Dixie, Sashaba, M fifteen, um, what, uh, all that. If there's a way to incorporate more of a traditional tree ordinance with maybe permitting, that would apply just to those districts or areas.
Okay.
Is that a question?
What do you guys think about that idea?
It's the next, I think it's the ne- you know. Yes. If you can't take this approach, let's try this way.
No, no, it would be, I'm proposing in conjunction.
Because it would only affect commercial, is what you're thinking, to get past the caveat that they don't want it on residential.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We, we approached it, Plan B was really firmly rejected because people were very concerned about residential issues. If you put an overlay district in the, in the Dixie Highway area, it's, there's, there's no, there's no residential right there. It's all, it's all commercial. I think there, there may be an apartment building or something, but.
That's not what they're worried about. They're just worried about people who, who, their only concern that I got out of the meetings was that. People who have tracts of vacant land, or in the future will assemble vacant tracts of land. Somehow, it becomes less profitable if they can't clearcut, and they weren't for that restriction. So, anything other than that, I don't, I didn't hear any other points other than that, and, and, uh. There seemed to be a little bit of an issue of could they differentiate between a commercial, a residential property being developed as a subdivision, becoming commercial. That seemed to be what they couldn't get their heads around, that it now is commercial, because it's a subdivision. Uh, so, I think what you're talking about, your areas you're talking about, that should, if you go based on what they've, the board has, you know, conveyed. That should not be a big issue for them, because that did not fall under any of their.
Yeah.
Issues they were having with, um, residential neighborhoods being created, and, you know.
Yeah.
Is what, what the, was what the big sticking point was, I, I felt. That was the big sticking point. is what what the was what the big sticking point was, I I felt, that was the big sticking point.
And Bill, what you're you're talking about too is kind of what I was talking about, just have some kind of landscaping rules for those commercial areas where you wanna preserve the tree, but I mean, like say, if they wanna cut it down, then there should be some, um, you know, something they have to do if they cut that down or something like that.
They just cut a twenty foot tall maple tree down next to my building on Dixie Highway. And when I called Brian, he said, well, they'll have to put in a new two inch caliber tree. Well, that's not, that's not adequate of a penalty, because you could see that. Now, what if others strip malls are like, can't see my buildings anymore? We start cutting them all down and then every five years, a little two inch tree gets put in.
Finally, when it gets nice and big.
We can look at that. We we can look at that in in terms of, and and then the other big idea that was in that memo was to look at having cluster developments. So these are residential developments, be a permitted use so that it's easy to do.
Oh, my God, yeah, yeah. So you don't have to do like a P U D to do that?
Right now, it's a special land.
Right now, it's a special land use. So you have to have a public hearing, everybody within three hundred feet is notified. So that's a check against the developer taking that option. Um, and the cluster is gonna preserve more trees, it's gonna preserve more natural features, it's gonna result in smaller lots.
But it then becomes a, what what you call a non discretionary approval.
Yes.
So we have less control.
You have less control.
So what regulates the open space that we, what what regulates our gain, our win for doing it?
Your your win for doing it is that it's gonna incentivize people to do developments where they're preserving natural features. And we could look at that cluster development for it to be maybe more prescriptive.
That's what I would think.
So, but wanted to make sure that that was something that you wanted us to explore as part of this.
Well, I can tell you that for the cluster, like for instance, these big acre parcels out in the, you know, excuse me, in the north side of the subdivision, like when, um, I don't know if it was Stonewall Farms developed as a cluster or not, but sixty acre parcel, three acre minimum. We say you can put, you know, that many homes on small lots on thirty of the acres, you donate the other thirty acres to the township. That's how we got our community garden on that thirty six acres. That's where the benefit of the, of, that's where I see the benefit of the cluster coming in, not jamming in a bunch of houses on a small parcel right off of a main, you know, right here on Sashaba or something, you know what I mean? Compared to larger tracts of land and then the developer gets to save on the roads, the infrastructure, the utilities. But in return, we get, um, in that situation, we got about an equal amount of value of property that was preserved um, as historical open space for allowing them to, uh, reduce those lot sizes down and and buffer and cluster and whatever. I I don't know if it was a cluster, but it's a similar, that's how how it would work. So I just want, I'm good with that, I just wanna make sure that the rewards are stipulated and the benefits of the township for that are, um,
Who are you looking at?
Stonewall. Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta tighten tighten up the.
All this was donated in order for them to build this.
So.
That's the community garden.
Megan, you think you can bring something back next month?
Because it's three acre minimum.
I have good direction.
So to let them build on hundred foot wide lots.
Are we ready to move on, folks? I think we are. Unless anybody says any more comments, we'll go to approval of the minutes from last month.
So it's a good way to create big tracts of open.
Somebody, uh, wanna make a motion to approve the minutes, my friend?
Move to approve the amendments for August fourteenth, twenty twenty five meeting. That's the board.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Megan, you got anything under consultant's report?
No.
No? Belinda?
Okay, now discussion. At the September twelve twenty four, a year ago, planning commission meeting, Dort Financial came before our PC and requested an amendment for the, their building modifications. It was at that time that the township realized they no longer had the landscape plans that were originally approved for that PUD. Dick Carlisle did say that the landscape plans that are approved by the PC are in perpetuity. That makes comparisons difficult, it, uh, if the original plans that were approved can no longer be located. The applicant replied that they are planning on cleaning up the vegetation on the north side of the west and west side of the building, since it is so overgrown. They also said they only plan to add new trees where they are removing dead woods. They actually did replace four trees on the south side of the building with what appears to be six foot evergreens. Ms. Mason Minnick said that they have a sixty five foot or sixty five feet on the north side of the building from the parking lot. I believe they said they would clear ten to fifteen feet on the north side. I drove by there today and the best, at the best, they have only cleared about five or six feet from the curb. There were originally six nice evergreen trees on the north side of the parking lot. They may not want to clear that area because I'm sure they will need to remove dead trees and replace them. The motion, the motion that was made at the September twelve twenty four meeting stated that all trees to be removed and replaced should be marked and township staff should verify any modifications. Has Dort requested anyone to come out and verify modifications? It has been one year, how long does the township retain the escrow? What type of enforcement does the township plan? This was to Brian. Um, we are about to meet with the trustees to discuss the tree ordinance. We need to also pay attention to the trees that are slowly dying because of invasives. There should be some enforcement for landscaping at Dort Financial, in my opinion. And then I sent pictures, I mean, they're so covered up. And I would challenge each of you to drive through their parking lot and on the north side, there were six big trees. I I pulled their aerial from, uh, two thousand and five. I'm guessing that was probably thirty feet cleared, at least thirty feet from the curb. And they own sixty five feet. So all they've done is mow up to where the invasives are and all the big trees are just, they're dying, they're covered up in invasives and it looks pitiful. Anyway, Brian answered me back, uh, I confirmed with Dort and also our DPW as to the limits of the wetland in that area during the remodel. As was the case with the discussions at the PC meeting in two, in two thousand and five, the wetland was not there because it was before the township Sashaba drain. The the area surrounding the current location of the Dort of Dort, uh, became a part of the Sashaba drain. Due to the evidence of wetland plantings, especially in the back corner, it is clear, uh, clearly a wetland and they could not clear much more than what they did to clean up because of the twenty five foot natural setback.
Oh.
I I wonder, you know, who said that, because I also talked to Eagle and they said they could clean that up if it was done by hand. They just can't bring in heavy equipment, but because it is close to a wetland. But what we approved, I'm just saying, what we approved a year ago is not what's there today. And if you look at it, it's really pitiful looking along the north side of that parking lot. It's a shame, really, that those trees have just been left to, they're dying, basically, they maybe already did.
I'll comment on that, I went and seen them, you can see them sticking out.
Yeah.
It's clearly just, my concern with that, and I don't know about the wetland where they, where all that lands, is that when you, and I live in the woods and the woods are invasive in nature, they'll take over if you let them, you know, especially with the invasive species and stuff. But we we, I, it all comes down to, we we need to do a better job of making developers retain what they agreed to provide us. And those, and 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 in that situation, whether it's there or somewhere else, when a developer decides or a business owner decides to not maintain thirty, forty, fifty feet of their property and then the property adjacent to them develops, you, you know, you have a mess on your hands where they, you know, those were beautiful pine trees and you can see the tops of them, but they're just engrossed in, just overgrowth from lack of maintenance, you know? But, um, I think that it's something that we just as a planning commission, as we keep talking about at each meeting. Um, and if there's gonna be some, uh, uh, changes coming up in in how the planning commissions ran and all of, or the planning department and enforcement, we've got some different employees, different things coming up in the next few weeks, um, because I got a copy of the agenda, so there'll be a discussion about that Tuesday that we need to, as a planning commission, maybe we need to do a referendum or, you know, Bill, we need, you know, to to, uh, to Ron's point about cutting down big trees and putting in little trees. My point about people wanting better views, so they're cutting down mature street trees with really no penalty, you know? That people aren't maintaining their sites that are supposed to be, uh, taken care of forever, that, you know, we just, it's a valid valid point and it's happening everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, you know, I think that we we need to be the, we're going to have to step up to be the the monitoring body of maintaining what we're approving. And then we have, um, and then hopefully the, um, the enforcement body will, you know, take over and, uh, you know, and do that, you know, do their part.
Well, what what will beef up the enforcement, because it seems like we have none. I mean, do you know how long they hold the escrow? Do we still have their escrow?
Putting me on the spot right now?
I thought you might know.
I think that's building spark.
I never did hear.
Brian should be able to tell you that.
I don't.
I asked him, he never did answer me.
I'm gonna say that I think that in the near future, um, there's going to be some changes made that will, um, that will give us different options. If, and I think that that will happen before the next planning commission meeting. And then I think at that point, we should, we could have a discussion of how would it be appropriate for us to convey violations and, you know, things that we see as a planning commission, because we're the most well versed on them, we approve the plans, we kinda know what you're supposed to have of how we would convey that to the administration and then, um, ask that that it be, they be held accountable to to enforce, you know? We just put another person on in enforcement, so now we have a, you know, we have another person there. Um, and, uh, um, I think that, I think that with the the structural change that's coming, which more people, it'll be more public on Tuesday. It doesn't, you can go read about it online right now, but I'm not gonna get into it at a planning commission meeting, but, uh, it's, you know, that that's kinda, we're gonna have the ability, I think, to do better. That's what I'm gonna say.
Is it on the agenda pack?
It is, for the township board for Tuesday, it came out today, so you can dive into it if you want or be surprised on Tuesday.
I would say that I I thank Belinda for following up and making sure that project met what was approved and bringing it up. And I, I think it's incumbent on all of us to do that. Um, we're all, except for Ron, well, to some extent, Sam, but Sam's sort of back again, knew. The projects we've looked at, none of them have been completed yet, so it's hard to, you know? But as they get completed, I think it is incumbent on us to go and see if it turned out the way you expected. And pursue that. Um, any other discussion? I was gonna ask Brian, but maybe you know Megan, you heard anything on the planet car wash?
Yes, actually, they re, they submitted some revised plans. Um, they don't have any architectural changes on it, so all the metal cladding is off. Um, and they had reduced their sign size and the landscaping was beefed up, a lot of the things that, I I think almost everything that you asked for.
Well, what that automated booth?
Um, I think that's gone, I'm not sure.
I think it is gone.
They built like the last two days, because was there the last time I got to wash my cars?
Not on on their plans, but I I can't.
Oh, not on their plans, oh, that's.
I I can't, I can't.
It's way easier to take it off the plan.
Way easier to take it off the plan.
Little eraser. I live in the physical world.
Yeah, no, I.
Did you say you think it's off the plan or on the plan?
I I can't say, I I.
An emergency escape route.
I I can't say, but so revised, what I can say is revised plans have been submitted, they are under review. I had a glance at them, it seemed to address a lot of the concerns that you had expressed earlier.
I drove by there today, they put up, I don't know, within the last couple of weeks or whatever, they put up a, a sign when you come out of there now, like, thank you for, you know, washing your car or whatever. But it's, it's a sign that's
Mounted.
mounted on the ground and everything, so.
It's a good car wash. They just gotta get it locked.
Anything else? I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. That's it.
Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Court?
All favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.